Welcome. Oh, Cas. All right, thank you, Cas. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Hillsborough Board of Education's Organization meeting. I am going to be sitting in, and usually for these meetings, I try to break my own record, so we're gonna time me here and see how quickly I can get out of this chair. All right. With that, in accordance with the Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice at this meeting has been provided to the Hillsborough Township by the Hillsborough Township Board of Ed to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News on December 30th. This notice has also been posted at the Board of Education office, and a copy has been sent to the township clerk and the public library. At this point, I'm gonna ask everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this point, I'm gonna also read the announcements of the school election that was held on November 5th, 2015. Elected to the board for a term of three years are Mrs. Bogachewski with 2,179 votes, Mrs. Santafonte with 2,454 votes, and Mr. Cooper with 2,206 votes. So what I'd like to do now is ask all three of you to please meet me at the podium where we can swear you in individually.
Dana Bogachewski?
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments that establish.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, please state your name.
I, Dana Bogachewski.
Possess the qualifications prescribed.
Possess the qualifications that are prescribed.
By law.
By law.
For this office.
For this office.
A member of Board of Education.
Of a member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Justly.
Justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to my best ability.
According to the best ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, please state your name.
I, Dana Bogachewski.
Possess the qualifications prescribed.
Possess the qualifications that are prescribed.
By law.
By law.
For this office.
For this office.
A member of Board of Education.
Of a member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Justly.
Justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to my best ability.
According to the best ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, please state your name.
I, Dana Santafani.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear.
And I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments.
And the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, please state your name.
I, Dana Santafani.
Possess the qualifications.
Possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
Member of the Board of Education.
Member of the Board of Education.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I, please state your name. I, Brett Cooper.
Will support.
Will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear.
And I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the governments.
And the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, please state your name.
I, Dana Santafani.
Possess the qualifications.
Possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
Member of the Board of Education.
Member of the Board of Education.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, we gotta wait for Mr. Cooper to sit down officially. Take your time. Okay, now I'd like to take a roll call as we take a roll call for the first time as a board, this with the new board. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Here.
Miss Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Dudda?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
And Mr. Kinst?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. All right, ladies and gentlemen, what I'm going to do now is actually work on the election of our officers, and I'm only gonna only work on the president for the Board of Education. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for president of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate, oh, you ready?
Yes, please, Mr. Gillette.
I'd like to nominate Tom Kinst as president.
Okay. Mr. Kinst, do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Okay. Do I have any other nominations for Board President? Seeing none, okay. I'm going to take a motion to close the nomination for Board President, and then we're gonna vote on the Board President. So let's take a motion to close the nominations for Board President, please. May I have a motion?
I move we close nominations.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's do a quick roll. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Miss Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Kinst. Come on down. Congratulations, Tom. Okay, so we'll continue on with the agenda, thank you. Okay, continuing on with election of officers, it's now for Vice President, so first I'd like to entertain a motion to open nominations for Vice President.
Oh, is that we do? Oh, I move we open nominations for Vice President.
Okay. Go to second. Okay. All right, now we ask for.
We got a first and second, now you wanted to ask if we have a nomination.
Do we have nominations for Vice President? And I'm happy to give that name.
I'll nominate Mrs. Haley for Vice President.
Mrs. Haley, do you accept?
I do.
Great. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we will now take a motion to close nominations. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
No, no. Oh, yes.
We're closing the nomination.
Okay, I move we close nominations.
Second?
Second.
Got it. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Miss Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Okay, now this is the actual vote for Mrs. Haley for Vice President. And may, we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll move that we vote for Mrs. Haley.
I second.
For Vice President. Okay. Got it. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Sure. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Miss Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Okay, now this is the actual vote for Mrs. Haley for Vice President. And may, we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll move that we vote for Mrs. Haley.
I second.
For Vice President. Okay. And discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Sure. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Miss Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Okay, motion is closed. At this point, we're going to take a motion for Mr. Kinst to be Board President. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Haas?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gillette? We'll do a roll call. Any questions, comments? No? Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Okay. Miss Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Okay, now this is the actual vote for Mrs. Haley for Vice President. And may, we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'll move that we vote for Mrs. Haley.
I second.
For Vice President. Okay. Got it. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Sure. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Miss Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Meeting schedules as we have it. Just real quick, I have board committee appointments, but before that, I just wanna, I just wanna state that this board has much to be proud of with the district's successes, but especially for the commitments and efforts by this district's parents, students, and staff achieving these successes. And on behalf of the board, I wanna thank each and all of you for that. I would like to thank the board members for their continued support and confidence in me for this role. I'd like to welcome back Mrs. Santafonte and Mrs. Bogachewski, and welcome Mr. Cooper on board to the, to the school board. And while I've been in this role for a number of years, I will not grow complacent in it. As I've stated before, I'm one of nine members and have hopefully demonstrated that I value diverse viewpoints and enable and encourage people to express them, and through those discussions, come together so that we can act as a board that, on values and priorities that are shared by many. We have a number of key endeavors this year, developing and formulating the district's strategic plan, which is, will incorporate our community's input, which will be done in the board committees and as the committee as a whole. Developing next year's budget in an environment of ever-increasing constraints, and then presenting a referendum for public approval of two key facilities project that would have significant funding from the state and require no increase in property taxes based on our fiscal management of the district to date. And that actually is something that we're going to act on later this meeting. So again, I'd like to thank you very much, and let's get to work. So with regard to board committee appointments for operations, and I'll give you a copy of this. Mr. Gillette will chair with Ms. Haley and Mr. Cooper as members. For human resources, Mrs. Santafonte will chair with Mr. Cohen and Mrs. Bogachewski as members. For education, Mrs. Haas will chair with Mr. Dudda and Mrs. Bogachewski as members. For governance, I will chair that with Ms. Haley, Mrs. Haas, and Mrs. Santafonte as members. For the negotiations committee, just wanna reinstate that, I will chair that with Mr. Gillette, Mr. Dudda, and Mrs. Santafonte as members. For township liaison, will be myself. For cultural arts commission liaison, will be Mr. Gillette. For legislative representative, will be Ms. Haley. For municipal alliance representative, will be Mrs. Santafonte. And for joint council liaison, I will take that role as has been precedent. The Garden State Coalition Schools rep will be myself until I, until we get a designation that's, and then for, lastly, which is, that list is the Somerset County Educational Services Commission rep, which will be Mrs. Haas, recurring in her role there. So a couple changes with the, with the differences in, with the membership, and so look forward to having a good productive year. Thank you. Okay. Continuing on the agenda, we have correspondence, which I have, which is listed in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it off to Dr. Schiff, the superintendent's report. Oh. Um. Yeah. Okay. All right. We will have to go into executive session, but once we get the timing for that, we'll continue on. And I'd actually would like to open it up to the public so we can get public comment first. So first, I'd like to open the floor to public comment, input on the 2016-17 budget. Again, this is something that we do, we started in December, and as we collect input from the public, this will help us understand what the community values are for that. Okay? Seeing none, now I'd like to open it up for comments from the public regarding the action agenda. Okay. Okay. We will move on with other parts, but first we have to take a break for an executive session. So whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education, the Township of Hillsborough, and the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matter to be discussed is a confidential student matter. Two, the matter discussed in executive sessions shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. It'll probably be about 20 minutes, and then we'll resume the, the open meeting. So I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we're going to executive session, we'll be back in about 20 minutes. Thank you. Okay, we're back from closed session, and my, my very sincere apologies for the, the time that it required for, for that matter, but we're back here now. So continuing on with the meeting, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome back to our two board members who were re-elected, and welcome to our deus, Mr. Cooper, as well. I just have two very brief announcements for the board and the community. First, the Hillsborough High School student newspaper, Hillsborough Voice, is now online at hillsborough-voice.com, and I'd just like to put it up on the big screen if I could for a moment. It's a very impressive. Hillsborough-voice.com. It's a wonderful website. The Hillsborough High School Voice has always been a very impressive student-run newspaper, and now being online, it's, it has now the 21st century bent on it. Congratulations to our Voice faculty, as well as all of the students that participate in the student newspaper. And I encourage you to bookmark it, some very extraordinarily fine-written articles are on there as well. The, the second announcement that I'd like to make, just very recently, I think it came out yesterday, that the Hillsborough Township Public Schools was ranked 21st on Neech.com's annual list of best public school districts in New Jersey. This is up from number 28 spot last year. The website ranked over 12,000 school districts nationwide based upon school district statistics, as well as incorporating the millions of opinions provided to the website by students and parents across the country. Congratulations to students, staff, and administrators of the Hillsborough Township Public Schools. Yes, that does deserve it. Thank you.
Okay. Continuing on with the agenda, we have approval of minutes. Like to entertain a motion to approve the December 21st, 2015 regular meeting minutes. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstaining? Sure. And Mr. Cooper? Okay, motion passes. Motion passes? Thank you. Committee reports. We covered that last meeting, correct? Okay. Thank you.
No, abstained.
Oh. Mrs. Bogachewski abstained as well. Got it. Motion still passed. All right. We did public comment, so now we're moving on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education. A motion to approve professional travel and related expenses, and to approve the nursing services plan for 2015, 2016.
Like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 and A2 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud. Surely. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Miss Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Continuing on with the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kinst. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources, to approve the resignation, leaves of absences, revised leave of absences, and the appointments of teacher, and the appointments of secretary student teachers, extra period coverage, and a host of policies for second reading that was reported out of HR, I believe, recently.
Yep. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B8 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud. Surely. Mrs. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Miss Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, continuing on with the action agenda.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve the resolution for referendum on March 8th for a new turf field at the high school, as well as a paving of the parking lot at the middle school. Forty percent will be, if the bond passes, then forty percent will be paid for by the Forty percent will be, if the bond passes, then forty percent will be paid for by the state through debt service aid, and sixty percent will be paid for out of the cap reserve, having, as a result, having no increase in property taxes as a result of voting yes on this referendum. Again, that's March 8th, and the times for the election will be 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM, and that's in the attached resolution. Second, C2, is to approve the resolution authorizing competitive contracting for pupil transportation management software. And we also have an addendum item coming out of executive session, a resolution, that Mr. Kent will read into the record.
So this will be item C3. The resolution reads, whereas the superintendent of schools has requested that the board disenroll a student whose name is on file in the board office, student, based on information that said student is not entitled to a tuition-free education from the board, and whereas on or about December 23, 2015, the superintendent provided the student's parents with notice of their right to a disenrollment hearing in the event that they did not agree with the superintendent's recommendation, and whereas on behalf of the student, the parents presented evidence and argument to the board and closed executive session on January 4, 2016, and whereas the board considered the evidence presented by the student's parents and by the administration, and whereas the board has determined that the student's parents have not met their burden under the statute NJSA 18A 38-1 to establish that the student is entitled to a tuition-free education from the board, now therefore be it resolved that the student shall be disenrolled from the Hillsborough Township Public School District, and the board secretary shall provide the parent with notice of the same, provided, however, that if the student's parents contest the board's decision before the Commissioner of Education within 21 days of receiving the notice of disenrollment, then the student shall remain enrolled in the Hillsborough Township School District while the appeal is pending before the Commissioner of Education. Okay. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1, which is the approval of resolution for referendum.
So should we make another motion? What do you want to do?
No.
We're separating. Okay, we're talking about C1.
Voting on C1?
Any discussion? Okay. I just have a couple of things, is that, you know, we've discussed this for months. We've planned for this, again, it's to replace the artificial turf at the high school, which is very well used by many athletics and extracurricular activities such as the marching band. It is coming upon its end of life, and so it is time for the board to make sure that we replace it before it becomes a safety hazard. And then the other aspect is that the middle school fixing the parking lot and the paving and also redirecting some drainage and site improvements, which would also include the ability now for middle school parents to drop their kids off at Hillsborough Middle School instead of where it is currently, which is Triangle Elementary School. As we stated, the total projects will not exceed more than $2,034,509, and we have already received confirmation from the state that it qualifies for debt service, and with that, the state will pay forty percent, the remaining sixty percent, which is roughly about 1.2 million, we will be able to pay for with our cap reserve, which we've been building up over the past years, as we have done, for capital projects of natures of this type. We prefer to pay as we go instead of incurring long-term debt. So it's an opportunity for us to get some money, or the community to get state funds, so that, you know, basically get a return on the income taxes that community members pay. And then also, with it coming out of the cap reserve, we will not be asking for any increase in the tax levy, an increase in property taxes for these two projects. So I think also by practice, we are not, board members are not allowed, once this motion passes, or is acted upon, that we cannot lobby or advocate for approval of the community approving the referendum, just to go out and vote, because the referendum ultimately resides with the community, but I'm stating now what my support is for this proposal. I think we're doing it in a very fiscally prudent manner, and again, it's, we're leveraging opportunities to get funding from the state and also with money that we have on hand, so there's no tax increases.
Mr. President, I just want to be, I'm sorry, I just want to be clear, we, as a board, ethically bound to not politic.
That's my understanding.
What about administration? Are they allowed to?
Our role as a board and administration is to inform the public, and it's very important that the public is aware of what the costs are, that we will be receiving if it passes over $600,000 approximately in taxes that return to Hillsborough from the state in the form of debt service aid. It's important that the community understands that in order to receive debt service aid, we need to go into debt, and we would do that by passing a one-year note, taking advantage of very low interest rates. And it's important that the community is informed of what goes on versus advocating for passage. Our responsibility as board members and as administration is to be very clear and communicate effectively what this is, costs associated with it, and why it's important to do, and why the board is supporting it.
So if, for example, a member of the public who has an interest in the athletic field comes and says XYZ, and XYZ is, they're under the wrong impression, we're allowed to say the truth, what the facts are?
Oh, exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
If the public asks you, should I vote yes for it? You say, you vote your conscience, you vote what you want. You can share with the community how you intend to vote, but it's, it is not, your role is not to advocate, your role is to educate.
I do have a question.
Yep.
So what happens if the reservation doesn't pass? What is the contingency?
That's a good question. We would still, I think, we would have to do the athletic field at some point where it just becomes unsafe, and we would have to either shut it down, or we would have to pay for it directly, and that would have to come through the budget process, and that would be entailed as an expense, or we would have to go back another time for a different referendum.
Right. I mean, a failed referendum means that the board is not able to borrow for the money, which means that we would forego the forty percent debt service aid, which means that the board, to do the projects, would have to pay 100 cents on the dollar rather than 60 cents on the dollar.
Understood all of that stuff. Just asking for the contingency, and can that contingency be shared with the public so that they understand what is the repercussion of not having that?
Of not doing that. Exactly. Yes. Yes, it's our responsibility to do that.
That's all.
Yeah. Mr. Gillette.
Thank you. So I'm just going to agree with everything that Tom said, explain it. Now that we put that turf field in a couple of years before I was on the board, and maybe Mrs. Haas was on the board at that time, I'm not sure, around that time, and so it's been there about 11 years, but one of the things I recall hearing even before I was on the board was that the public wanted to make sure that the school district would be able to pay for that turf field when it came up to be refurbished, renewed, because there was a tremendous fundraising effort at the time. People put a lot of money in, but people, they said, we're doing this once. We know this has a 10-, 11-year life. Are you going to be able to handle it? Are you going to put money away? Are you going to be smart about it? Several years ago, about five years ago, we started using the capital reserve account, which we had not really used much in the first five years I was on the board, but we started using it about four, five years ago, and making deposits when we could at the end of the year from excess surplus for various capital projects. So I just want to be very clear that we knew that this project would be coming up. We knew that we would be able to make a deposit into capital reserve so that we would be able to fund this without doing the, going to the public with a fundraising effort, and even in this case, without going to the public to take a long-term bond for this. The other project was, we were lucky that we had enough in the capital reserve to also cover 60% of the parking lot project. That project was something that wasn't on the radar, but we had two very destructive winters in a row with ice, and a water main break, which may also be part of the ice and cold temperatures that we had the last couple of years probably contributed to that also. Those were something that we, it was not on the radar, but it quickly became evident that it had to be done. So after we realized, after we put these projects in with the architect, put them into, with the state, we got the approvals, and we're very fortunate to be able to fund 60% of these projects, and I fully expect the referendum to pass. It's logical, it makes sense. It's a conservative use of our money and taxpayer money, and I'm, you know, I'm doing my politicking now before we pass the resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Another thing today I want to note is the hours for the referendum, for people coming in. So we decided to, the dates for which referendum can happen are preset. We chose the March one, and that we explained earlier that that timing allows us to, if the referendum is approved, that gives us the time to do the planning and actually complete the projects during the summertime. We made the decision to be as open and inclusive with regard to the voting public, to provide as much opportunity for the voters to vote. So in the past, when elections were in April for board of elections, those were typically, I think, like 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We've decided to adopt the general election time period of 7:00 to 9:00 to make sure we can get as many people out to vote as possible, you know, so we're also cognizant of that and want to make sure that we're being as inclusive as possible for that. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Tom, I just have a question.
Yeah.
General election is 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Why are we 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
That's a good question.
Is it 6:00 to 8:00?
Yep.
The, the, the times that we were given from the county clerk, right?
These were the options.
Those, that was, they didn't give that option.
I guess maybe they're changing. I don't know.
Why did they give this?
They did not give that option.
At that seat, yeah, because I, Mrs. Hoss.
I think you're right. I think it's 6:00 to 8:00.
It is, definitely.
6:00 to 8:00. And our old Board of Ed, when we used to have April elections, it was 2:00 to 9:00.
2:00 to 9:00. That was an option. That was an option. That was before Operations Committee, was 2:00 to 9:00, 7:00 to 9:00, or 7:00 to 7:00, I think, or something like that, right? To end earlier in the evening.
I don't remember, I don't remember in Operations, when we had the committee meeting, we were discussing that, that a 6:00 to 8:00 time period was offered.
No, it was not, it was not an option on the table that was reported.
I'm sure the poll ladies will appreciate the extra hour of sleep, but it does add to confusion of the public.
Yeah, so we have to make sure when we do communication that we, that we're very clear on where the polling places are and when the polls will be open.
If we pass the resolution, though, with the, because it does state the 7:00 to 9:00 in there, and Mr. Ratty comes back to us and says, oops, we have to tell you 6:00 to 8:00, do we have to pass another resolution?
Can we amend the resolution if there's an error in time?
Yeah, we'll have to.
Yeah, we'll have to. Yeah, this was, I mean, this was prepared, this was prepared by legal counsel.
Yeah. No, because the way I pull it up is just that I see red line on C1.
Yeah, and that, that was because of the different options that were provided to us by the clerk's office.
Just curious.
All right. Any other discussion with regard to the, okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely, Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Abstained.
Okay. Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Abstained.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item C2 of the action agenda.
Oh, we don't, do we have to have another motion? So moved.
Yeah. Have a second. Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely, Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely, Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Did you want to abstain? Are you sure you meant yes?
You didn't.
Can I?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure what C3 was.
Okay.
Can I change my vote?
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion that we take a revote due to technical errors on, people not knowing what it was.
I'm sorry.
So let's make a motion. Someone second that.
Second.
Okay, let's have all in favor of, or something like that.
Do we need a?
Can we have a clarifying statement so that people understand?
Sure. Okay. All right. This is, this is the motion that was the resolution to disenroll a student. Okay?
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. So I made a motion to revote, and it was seconded. What do we do with that?
We're going to just post, we're just going to have to postpone. We're really supposed to go with it, but we're going to postpone that.
No, we can do a revote.
We can do a revote.
We can do a revote, but I don't know that you can, we took an official vote. Okay.
Well, if there was, but if there was a technical error that someone didn't hear what it was about.
Somebody in the affirmative can call for a revote.
Yeah.
Right?
Can we do an all in favor to revote?
So then do we need to do, it can be all in favor?
No. But this one, for the next one, we're just going to take the next vote and just cancel that one.
Okay.
I'll make a.
Okay. All right. Okay. I think there's support.
I'll make a motion to move C3. I'll move C3.
And Jen Haley's side.
Okay. All right. Okay, so again, this is C3. Apologies for that. This is for the resolution to disenroll. Okay? So roll call, please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely, you guys. Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, that concludes the action agenda. I'd like to open up the floor to the public for any items. Mr. Zabali.
Hello.
Name an address, please.
Thomas Zabali, Nine Upper In Shannick Court. The reason why I'm, the reason why I'm here is because I thought, I remember distinctly from the last meeting, that Mr. Gillette said that we were going to get a reading of the ballot question. I remember that that was something he had stated at the last meeting. I'd like a reading of the ballot question, please.
Okay. I mean, for the record, I can read it.
Yeah, excuse me, I thought it was, I thought it was printed as part of the, agendas that are on the table, but if it wasn't, it's my fault. I thought it was.
I'm happy, I'm happy to read it.
Okay. That was, I thought, I thought the public received it.
Sorry, if it's in here, I don't, I don't see it.
No, it's okay.
I guess it's not.
No worries. It's, no, it's, it's, do you have any other?
No, that's it.
Okay, so I'm happy to read, to read this, and it is, there's an explanatory statement that says the project, "The board is seeking to undertake the following facilities improvements: replace existing artificial turf field at the high school, and paving, parking lot, drainage, and site improvements at the middle school. Total project costs: The total cost of the project shall not exceed $2,034,509. The board has received an award of state funding in the amount of 40% of the total project costs, which state funding reduces the taxpayer's share of the project to 60%. Forty percent state funding for the project." This is all still part of the explanatory statement. "The board will receive state aid for the project in the form of debt service aid in the amount of 40%. The state aid reduces the taxpayer's share of the project to 60% of the total project cost. Such state funding will only be available if the referendum passes. The board anticipates funding its 60% of debt service, with monies currently on deposit in the capital reserve fund, so no new tax dollars will be raised to pay for the project." The proposal, "The Board of Education, the Township of Hillsborough, and the County of Somerset, New Jersey is authorized to undertake a school facilities project consisting of the replacement of the existing artificial turf field at the high school, and paving, parking lot, drainage, and site improvements at the middle school. The board is authorized to expend on such project and issue bonds for such project in an amount not to exceed $2,034,509. The state has agreed to provide debt service aid in the amount of 40% of the, quote, 'final eligible costs,' unquote, of the school facilities project. All the costs of the project are, quote, 'final eligible costs.'" And then it talks about hereby approve, adopt, and the proposal, and then just stating who the bond council is and the termination of preliminary. But what I just read is what's going to be on the ballot. So there's going to be an explanatory statement, and then the actual proposal.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Maria DeLucia, 122 South Triangle Road, and I'm also the second VP for the HEA. This is something happy. I never cease to be amazed and proud of the teachers and staff of this district, and we truly are the heart of Hillsborough. And you are often made aware of positive things that happen in the schools, and we often see that written in the Hillsborough Happenings, the newsletter that comes out. But I have a few more things that, I'd like to share a few more ways in which the teachers and staff and students of this district are making a difference in helping Hillsborough and surrounding areas. The HEA collected during November and December over $530 in cash donations from teachers and staff, and donated them to Hillsborough Social Services for their use during the holidays and use for local families. In Sunnymead Elementary School, there was incorporated into a gratitude lesson in the fourth grade classes. The fourth grade teachers and students made cards, their families helped purchase, and then they donated, decorated, and wrapped over 80 gifts that were then sent to the Agape House for use of over 30 children there, and that was a wonderful, wonderful thing that they did. And then at the middle school, Team 7D teachers gently requested that if any parents or students were thinking of giving the teachers a holiday gift, that instead they consider donating, making a small donation to a local Hillsborough charity called Steps Together, and many parents and students did do that this year, and over $200 was then sent to Steps Together. So just some ways in which our faculty and staff are going above and beyond, so.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. DeLucia, for sharing that. Any other, see no other public comment? Any old business, new business from board members? Mrs. Haley?
Thank you, Mr. Kent. I just wanted to say thank you again to my fellow board members for voting me in as vice president for the third year in a row. I really do enjoy stepping in. It's like Miss America when Tom can't, you know, be here, I get to step in and run the meeting, so thank you all again for your vote of confidence.
You're welcome. Okay. Mr. Gillette?
I'm just going to put in my annual request that we have the first meeting of the month, that we don't vote on anything, and the second meeting of the month, we vote on everything. I think I put that request in every year, except for years where I'm re-elected, then I don't want to dwell on something like that. But I just would like to, I like that better. That's how it was when Judy and I were first on the board, and I just do the committee reports and the student things and stuff in the first meeting of the month, but we vote on nothing. You know, a work meeting?
Yeah.
An action meeting. It's not, I know we've gone far past that, but I just wanted to put that out there. That's all I had for this here. Thank you.
Actually, I do have a question.
Yeah.
And this might pertain to what Mr. Gillette said. When are we going to set the 2016 board meeting?
Calendar?